I said, "I spent money you hadn't noticed it." But I noticed it last time. And I thought, "I wouldn't have waited until..."
Users ask me what was different in this factory.
Even after Sarah had... No, I noticed it last time.
Well, can you come here? Two speakers. He's sitting down in the corner over there. He's in trouble. He's in trouble, so he has to sit in the corner. In a tiny wheelchair. Ready? 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 Good evening, everyone. We're here for the Rockingham County School Board meeting on February 8th, 2021. Welcome. The first thing that we'll do is approve the agenda for this evening. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lourde. Do we have a second? Thank you, Dr. McIlkin. Any questions or discussion board members? Please vote. The agenda is approved, 5-0. Next, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Dr. Seichel?
In observance of School Board Appreciation Month, which is in February, you have certificates of appreciation at your desks. And we had talked about this, you know, for a few times over the last few months. Being a school board member, especially during, you know, times when we have to consider controversial topics such as a growth in the county or changes to the instructional plans to provide teachers with more collaboration time. And then also, of course, the global pandemic that we've dealt with over the last 11 months. You faced viewpoints from the public, from staff, from all kinds of directions. And as board members, you know, it's been amazing to see how you've been able to still always have courteous conversations that, you know, the emotions that are brought to the board don't get reflected back. You know, it's really a joy to see the board members respond to those members of the public that, you know, sometimes for a variety of reasons are angry about a decision. And so as staff, we can always count on that. We can always count that the conversations are about learning, that they are about what's best for, you know, more than 11,000 students and for more than 2,000 staff members. And staff isn't forgotten in those conversations. It is always at the forefront of the conversations. And so usually, we celebrate School Board Appreciation Month a little bit more informally. But of course, again, that's another event that the pandemic has canceled for us. And we'll get back to that, though, as soon as we can. And we'll celebrate that again. You know, we've had busy 15 months now, talking about all kinds of topics. And it's been my pleasure to work with you every week. And I know staff feel supported all the way and at every turn. And even when there's disagreement about a decision, I think the motives of this board and the individual members are never questioned. It is about the staff and it is about the students and creating positive learning environments for all students. And truly mean all students by that. And so I want to personally thank you for that. And again, I'll let you know how much you are appreciated by the families in the county and also by our staff. So thank you for your service that is not always appreciated as much as it should. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Seichel. We have next, public comments. We don't have anyone signed up to speak tonight. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to highlights by board members. Dr. McIlkin?
Thank you, Ms. Reed. I'd like to begin this evening by saying that my highlight is the fact that the high school students were able to return to school on Thursday and Friday for the first time. We were thrilled to have everyone back. And I have heard reports from parents saying how happy the students were to be back. And the students reported that the teachers seemed genuinely happy to have them back. So that was a wonderful, wonderful thing to hear. My second highlight is that I would like to say a big word of appreciation, a biggest shout out to Jeremy Holloway and his fire and rescue team and everyone who's working with the schools to vaccinate our staff. It's very much appreciated. And we thank you for all the hard work and the perseverance to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McIlkin. Mr. Falk? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Ms. Lourde?
I too wanted to comment. Definitely huge highlight at my house, getting students, high school students back in the schools. So, and I want to thank everyone who worked really hard to make that happen, especially the guidance counselors. Both of my kids have classes that look a little different than usual. I think they're taking them in the commons area on their computer. But they're taking classes that they need. And they're getting these things done. And they're in school with their friends and moving towards being with their teachers for the entire year. So thank you to everyone who's worked really hard on that. Definitely a highlight.
Thank you, Ms. Lourde. Mr. Breeden?
Thank you. I'm sorry I missed you all at the last meeting. As we all do, we hoped that COVID would not touch our families. But mine has been touched by it in the last couple of weeks. Not I personally, but others are doing well. But instead of wearing three hats, I've had to wear four or five. And so to those in the community who may be within the sound of my voice, if you've tried to reach out to me and I've not been able to get back to you, I'm uncovering from that now. So hopefully, we will in the near future. And I too would like to thank those at the high school level. I have a 14-year-old freshman in my household, and it is good for him to be back in school. And just talking with the staff, and my experience is firsthand is with East Rockingham. And I'm sure it's true for all the other high schools as well. But just the positive tone in the voice of the staff when you talk to them is really refreshing. And I talked to one of the assistant principals today. And it was, it was almost like a conversation about a birthday or something. He was so jovial. So we appreciate all of that. We truly do.
Then 1,500 members statewide, including teachers, school administrators, and higher education faculty. VA, SCD Executive Director Laurie McCullough said, "For school leaders, the past year has demanded exceptional dedication, tireless effort, and new approaches to problems never before seen. School principals have been uniquely challenged to keep their school communities connected and productive. Mr. Kapuchek brings never-give-up attitude and an innovative approach to his work to provide a model for many other leaders." And I want to congratulate him. I spoke to him on the phone earlier today and just wanted to point that award out. It's, again, one educator in Virginia. And so that's a high recognition for him and well-deserved. He has served on many leadership committees, you know, innovation committees. Currently serves on the Future Focus Schools Collaborative Committee and is an outstanding principal and has been recognized. And I remember going to the VA SCD conference a couple of years ago. And you could tell then, you know, that when Jay walked in, immediately heads turned and people walked up to him to get his advice on topics. And so it's a pleasure again to have principals and leaders of that caliber in our school division. And our students certainly benefit at Plains Elementary School and across the division.
Thank you, Dr. Seichel. Congratulations from the board to Mr. Kapuchek. You know, we've, even in these tough times, the teachers and staff and principals and administrators continue to bring accolades to Rockingham County. And we're very proud of them in the work that they're doing. And it's much appreciated. So thank you. Board members, we'll move into action items. You have the minutes from the last meeting. We need a motion to approve those minutes.
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lourde. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion board members? Seeing none, please vote. The minutes are approved, 5-0. Next in action items is bills. Board members, you have the bills presented to you. Dr. Seichel?
I recommend approval of the January invoices and mileage as presented in your materials.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding invoices and mileage as presented. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move we approve the invoices and mileage as presented by Dr. Seichel.
Thank you, Dr. McIlkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Any questions or discussion? If none, please vote. The vote is 5-0. Ms. Mash, you can pay the bills. So, all right. Next is Mr. Reed. You have a request for us, Northby?
Yes, Dr. Seichel, Madam Chairman, members of the board. It's time for us to rebid our custodial supplies. And this evening, I'm coming with a request to use competitive negotiations via an RFP in lieu of a sealed bid and approval of the RFP selection committee. The contract is approximately $160,000 to $170,000 a year. And with the custody of supplies, it's very important that we have more than just somebody to sell us materials. We need to have knowledgeable personnel that we can call if we have any type of issues or any type of problems with the products. And also have confidence that when we do order, it's not going to be, you know, back order supply that we'll order from, that we're going to get the stuff that we need. And for those reasons, we would like to use the RFP process. We will use the same qualification, the same points scales as we did the last time we did this, which qualifications are 20 points, product acceptability and availability, 20 points, service, 20 points, and price, 40 points. I will point out that last time that we did this, it was very interesting that we found that the vendor that we were using, the dispensing stations that mixes the chemicals, we found that was not consistent from school to school. So we weren't getting the same strength of product at one school that we worked the other because the dispensing stations weren't being up kept. And that's one of the reasons why we did change last time that we did this. I also ask for approval of the following people for the selection committee, which would be myself, Mark Kozenski, maintenance facilitator; Carol Miller, maintenance department secretary; Mark Swagert, assistant principal at Turner Ashby High School; Karen Ritter, principal at John Whelan Elementary School; Carolyn Moore, head custodian at South River; and Roger Kite, head custodian at Elton Middle School.
I do recommend the request to use competitive negotiations via an RFP in lieu of competitive sealed bidding and to also approve the RFP selection committee.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion for approval?
They're moved.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McIlkin. Any questions or discussion for Mr. Reed? Dr. Seichel? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Information items. First up is Dr. Aldifer. Her school calendar.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Seichel. I am going to be stepping in for Dr. Shiffler this evening. He was unable to be here. But did want to talk a little bit about the school calendar, the proposed school calendar. Back in December, it was discussed with the board about us potentially getting together with Harrisonburg City Schools, looking at our calendars and trying to come together on a calendar that would look at least somewhat similar, partly because we share MTC. It's much more efficient if kids are there at the same day, on the same days. And also, we have other families and folks who are split between the two schools. So we, our Future Focus team, met with members from Harrisonburg City Schools on three different occasions. And we did a little bit of negotiating and working through different scenarios. And we were able to come up with a calendar that while not exactly the same, there are significantly more similarities now than there were prior to, in past years. A couple of highlights for this year's calendar, a proposed calendar. We will be starting or proposing to start on August 23rd, which is a Monday, which is not usually the day we start. We typically have started on a Tuesday. Because of some of the other constraints in the calendar, we moved it up a day. Harrisonburg City Schools had decided to start the week before that. So they're starting on the 17th. We are looking about having, Martin Luther King Day will be a holiday again this year. We had started that this past year or this past January. And then following that with a work day for teachers as well, the day after MLK Day. Another significant change is the movement of our spring break. The spring break is now going to be moved... break. The spring break is now going to be moved to the middle of March. Typically, that has been, has moved to being around the Easter holiday. We had selected that third week in March, that would be the same as Harrisonburg and also the same as James Madison University. That is actually a nice time in the calendar for a break for students, we find, and for staff as well. We find that often times, it's about that time, mid-March, people start getting real fatigued after being in school for several months after the winter break. We are still going to be having or proposing that we have the Easter Monday and Good Friday off as well. So I'm happy to answer questions you may have about the calendar or any suggestions.
Didn't we just really like starting on Thursday? We've had two semesters now that we had a Thursday start thanks to weather and COVID. Didn't we like that? Come on. You know I have to say it. You know I like the Thursday start.
I understand. Yeah, in any case, with all of these decisions, there's constraints, right? So we're not able to get everything we want, but we're trying to make the best possible product.
Other questions, board members? I think, Dr. Aldifer, we've had precedents when Easter's fallen late before that we bumped, I remember when I was on the calendar committee, bumped it up to kind of, so it wasn't so late in the year, closer to the SOLs, whatever they may look like. So, okay. Is there any other things that kind of are off that, with Harrisonburg, that we should be aware of? Or is it really just the start date?
So the, the start date is there. We also have in our calendar 183 days. We like to keep that time. We tend to miss more time for weather than they do. Their calendar only has 180 days in it. So as a result of that, there are some other modifications that are, where they're taking some days, holidays, in which we're not. Also compounded by the fact that they're starting five days earlier than us. So there are some, some days in which they'll be off during the year that we're not.
Thank you. Thank you for your efforts to work with them to kind of align those. I know for MTC and Governor's School and some of the other things, that's very helpful. So thanks to Dr. Schiffler and the Future Focus team, and you are working through that with them. Thank you. Cheryl, I think you're going to talk about budget planning.
Chairman Reed, members of the board and Dr. Schike, you should have found at your seat revenue that we're going to look at this evening a little bit. This, this revenue is the Governor's budget, which came out December 16th. We have not seen the House or the Senate budget yet. That will be forthcoming soon. This is the second year of the biennium. Couple of things I'd like to point out. We have the same composite index, 37.99. That would be because we are in, this is the same biennium. Do notice that the ADM has changed. Our current year's budget was built on 11,400 ADM and we are projecting next year 10,906. That number actually came from the state and we are using it throughout this budget season also. The, I'll point out one thing, we're going to look there at that miscellaneous, but if you'll drop down to the state budget, which is fourth down, it says no loss funding of $2,727, that is the money that they are giving us because of that ADM drop. If our ADM next year would go back to 11,400 or whatever, if it would increase, this, this no loss funding is going to decrease. Those are tied together. It's roughly about $5,000 to $6,000 that we will lose in no loss funding for every student that we have higher than what we build in the budget because we will get basic aid and other. So those two are tied together. I just wanted to point that out. If we look at that miscellaneous income, you'll see there's only one significant difference there, and that is our Medicaid reimbursement. And that $100,000 decrease is related to COVID. Our Medicaid reimbursement is reimbursement that we get for services that we provide in the school. And with children not being in the building, that has decreased the amount of revenue that we'll receive for next year. And in case you're wondering, the 450 for the current year is going to be closer to 300,000. So I'm dealing with that in the current year. And the reason that's going to go over into next year is because we do an annual cost report in the fall, in November, for the previous year, that the fiscal year. So this November, we will do the 2021. And that revenue actually flows to us in the spring. It falls a year behind. So the impact of the final cost report will be, will be next year related to the current year when we haven't had kids in the building as often. So that's going to affect a two-year period of time. The next year we're going to look at is the state revenue. And again, that state revenue is built on 10,906 students. I talked to you about the no loss funding of 2.7 million. Right below that, there's a bonus payment of 740,000 that we are receiving from the state. The Governor proposed a 2% bonus to all employees that needed to be paid by the end of September of this year. So early in the new fiscal year. However, there is talk in the General Assembly that that may be a 2% raise. And so we're waiting to see what finalizes there. But the Governor's, it was a 2% budget, excuse me, a 2% bonus. The other items there that you see are really related to the change in ADM. The second part of the state revenue that we're looking at, most of that is ADM driven, where you see negatives. You will see that our at-risk funds and our Virginia preschool initiative amounts are increasing next year. I'm currently working on both of those to see if there's additional staff that needs to be hired or if we need ratios relate already to receive that revenue. The federal revenue there that you see, that has been updated some. It will be updated a little more once we decide whether there will be raises or bonuses given because that will affect the amount of reimbursement that we can receive from each of those federal funds. So they could change slightly. The local share of education, I have held even. That's not to indicate that we are, that it's not because we are expecting no increase from them. It's just I haven't put that in this equation at this point so that you can see that outside of the local share of education revenue that we'll receive, we're looking at about $1.2 million increase in revenue. And as you know, the last time we looked at expense.
Ms. Mast?
Ms. Mast? I understand that there's a bill in our, hopefully a bill in the federal, at the federal level. And it was my understanding that some of that would include increased funding for Title I. I know nothing has, is finalized, but are you?
Yes, we did. We received a scoops memo last week, I believe, that showed us a preliminary number for early in the year of federal funds. That notice did increase Title I by approximately half a million dollars. So we are working through that, that amount, what the requirements are and to see if we can hire additional reading teachers or maybe whatever, other things that Title I covers too. But yes, we did see a preliminary memo on that.
Thank you.
The bonus payment of 740,000, that doesn't cover.
No, it will not cover that. The, to give a 2% raise in the division costs about $1 million percent, so that would be 2 million. A bonus won't cost quite that much because that would only be the FICA, would be the only, there'd be no VRS or any other type of benefit attached to it. But I think the 2% bonus would probably cost us between 1.6, 1.7 million. They only give their portion for the SOQ positions, just like when we, they give money for a by other types of revenue or an increase from the locality, correct? Or a cut in expenditure.
The no loss funding, Cheryl, is, is that going to be evaluated? Did I, did I understand? Will it be evaluated as the year goes on so that that 2.7 will, will vary depending upon what our actual ADM is?
Right. And so I really think that this no loss in this, for the next fiscal year, will really not have any impact because I think if it goes down, basic aid is going up. So I think we can count on that with this number and then not really worry so much.
Right.
Because it will work itself out. In the current year, we are also, because we are looking at a number, number similar to that enrolled in the current year, we did receive no loss funding also for the current year to offset our decrease in other state funding. So we have been held harmless in this current year, even though our ADM is down.
Any other questions, board members?
On that note, I'm just curious, and you might not know this, and I apologize for asking you on the spot, but did we have a whole lot of students come back to us as the year? I know that there were a certain number of students that went private.
Right.
Have they come back?
We've not seen an increase in that, no. Not a significant type of increase, no. We have our, from the fall, when we looked at a little bit, we've had some children go to homeschooling and did not use our home learning academy. And then other children, we believe, are enrolled in private school.
Thank you, Cheryl, as always, for your hard work on all of that. Thank you. Dr. Schike?
Members of the board, this is time for our obligatory COVID update. Before I get to that, though, I do want to say thank you to Cheryl Mast, you know, for the enormous amount of work that's again, gone into budget work. And again, Cheryl was also responsible for a large portion of our health plan related to COVID. And so again, double duty as, you know, some others have had to pull as well. And hopefully she will now have time to really focus on the budget and not, not have to deal with quarantines that all of a sudden don't match CDC requirements and we have to decide what to do with those employees. I also want to say that the General Assembly, they're, you know, wants a lot of the bills that are still making their way through, either don't make it or actually become law, there will be some significant potential impact. And so, for example, one of the pieces, you know, that Cheryl talked about is the no loss funding. So, you know, we'll have some decisions to make if that in the end gets approved. And then also, there are bills, for example, that could affect the calendar. There's one bill that's moving through that would permit us to have as many as 10 virtual snow days. So we're ahead of time, we could determine what students would do on that day. And then as many as 10 could be approved. And so, you know, then you don't have to cushion it as much, you know, with the 183. At the same time, though, there's a bill that's making its way through that is based on this desire to have all the kids back in school. And it's Senate Bill 1303, I believe. And what the bill says, though, is that every student has to be given the opportunity to attend school in person, but that the school division also has to make sure that any family can choose a virtual environment for that student. And so the intent by the patron was to basically open up the schools. This would go into effect July 1. But what it also would do is require us to basically run a second school system that's fully virtual. So that's, we'll see what happens in the House. So there's still a lot to be discussed. And in the conversations, you know, on that bill, you know, there wasn't really a whole lot of conversation about that requirement, because that wasn't the intent. The intent was to open schools. But the way it's written, it could create, you know, some additional issues. So we'll have to keep following that. But, you know, as you know, we, and as was mentioned previously, we now have the opportunity for every student in Rockingham County to attend school in person. And so when we look again at our health data, you'll see there now, again, a few counties that have dropped back into the orange category. So below 200 new cases per 100,000 population over 14 days. But most of the state is still in solid red. But the trend data at least has been encouraging. So I put this together based on what we looked at previously. So back in September, we were in red, we dropped back down into orange. In October, we were, you know, fairly low at 140, which is still, you have to remember, orange is the second highest category, right? There's still yellow and then two shades of green before, you know, that would be much better to have. But then by January, because of the surge related to Thanksgiving gatherings and also Christmas holiday, the highest level that we reached was 1,168 on January 12th. So that was the peak for us. And then at the last board meeting, we were at 883. And as of today, we're back down to 509. So the trends are encouraging, but of course, 509, if you think back to the conversations we had in September and October, we would have shuttered at 509, right? But if the trend's going down, and what we've learned, of course, and what we've really said all along, is that even at 509 or even at 1168, you can actually have school. But it really has some stringent requirements that have to be met and in place. And you can also see that the positivity rate is still in red, but again, going down from the high of 22%. So again, that's today's numbers, 509.6 and 14.9. And then the secondary indicators, right? That's where you see the trends that we really like. So 26.8%, that's a seven-day number compared to the seven days prior. So that means of that 14-day trend, the second half was significantly lower than the first half. And that's a good sign because if that continues, you know, then the next 14-day number will be good. In fact, a couple days ago, now that was 50% lower than the previous seven days. So there've been some significant drops, but there've also been, again, some small spikes. But now we're looking again at some days where we only had four cases. Some days, I believe today was 22, something in that neighborhood. And, but we're not at the hundred and some numbers anymore. And then percentage of hospital inpatient beds, and then also those that are occupied by COVID patients. We have to take that with a grain of salt because some medical facilities do not share their numbers. And so that's created a little bit of an issue here and there. What I really wanted to focus on tonight is what many, of course, are aware of, and that is Governor Newortham's press conference last week on Friday. So he basically talked about schools needing to open for in-person learning by March 15th. And it's really important to understand what that letter that was sent to board chairs and to superintendents that he made public in his press conference, what it really means. So again, he's talking about discussing next steps and wanting So again, he's talking about discussing next steps and wanting students to have the opportunity to be back in school physically, in person. But, and so the first part that I outlined there, you know, we've talked about this all along since August. We know that with consistent and effective mitigation measures, transmission of the virus can be successfully managed in school settings. That's, we talked about that. Mitigation is key beyond the five mitigation strategies that you see at the VDH and CDC website. We also added, because of advice from Dr. Fauci, but also from Harvard Public Health Researchers, our ventilation systems that have improved the environment in our classrooms to account for the possible aerosol spread and so to reduce the chance of that happening. So one, he does recognize that with proper mitigation, students can be in school. And that's been our approach from the very beginning. That's what our plan is based on. And when you look at, you know, who this letter is really about, it's not about the 13 school divisions that are in person. It's not about the all hybrid school divisions or even the partial in person like we are. For the most part, this is addressing the 43 school divisions that are listed as fully remote and nine that are partial hybrid. So in those school divisions, not all students have the opportunity to actually attend school. Even in the partial in person, it's not true for all students, but, you know, in Rockingham County it is. So we're not really the target of Governor Northam's letter. And also, it's important to remember, the letter also contains, you know, this phrase, "You should also plan to maintain remote learning options." So we continue to have our Home Learning Academy and consistently employ mitigation strategies recommended by the Virginia Department of Health and the CDC. And the physical distancing requirement in the CDC guidance and the VDH guidance is still at six feet. And so what Governor Northam is talking about here is giving students an opportunity to at least come to the school building and experience some in-person learning. As you all have said, you know, the students, the teachers, the administrators were overwhelmingly excited, you know, this past week when they had the chance to return. Principals were, Texas says it's the best day of the school year so far. And we know that students come to school for social reasons. And when those social reasons then, you know, exist for them, they can be with their friends. And they also feel so much better about the learning environment. And that's really what I've heard from staff members, you know, who have students and also from parents, you know, the kids are happy to be back in school, even though it's only two days a week in person. But given the fact that we do need to follow expert advice and have from the beginning, six foot distancing isn't going away, at least not at this point. Unless CDC or VDH changes that guidance, we will continue to require face coverings. And distancing also, of course, significantly affects transportation, right? So we can't just bring all the kids to school on a bus and have the kids sit right next to each other because then again, you're violating those rules. There were some school divisions that experimented with three foot distancing as the World Health Organization standard. But what happens there is exposure definitions are still based on six feet. So anytime someone tests positive, all the kids around that student have to be quarantined. And so in some of those school divisions, you know, then schools had to shut down because there were so many kids out on quarantine. There's a constant movement from in-person learning to virtual learning again for those kids. And so, you know, there are challenges with that. And certainly long term, you know, with the vaccine also being available, you know, when we talk about next school year, you know, if we're still dealing with this, you know, then those are different considerations. But for now, the guidance is six feet and that's what we're going to continue to focus on. There are some news stories that are important to talk about. We've all heard about the variants, you know, the mutations in the virus, especially where the spike protein is affected and especially the one in South Africa that has something like 37 different mutations that can evade some of the body's defenses. There is some indication that the UK variant may become the dominant strain in the United States by March. So we can't just assume that these trends that are luckily trending down are simply going to continue, right? We have to keep our eyes on it because in the UK, for example, you know, you saw those same trends. And so many countries in Europe are under third lockdown because again, once those mutations happened and the variants took over, they are 40% more contagious. So we have to keep our eyes on it. There are some suggestions, you know, to mitigate for that. One of them is double masking. I know there's some, some people use their KN95 masks or the N95, you know, respirators. They filter out 95% of all the particles. You can actually achieve a similar effect by using, you know, the surgical masks. And the recommendation, if you do double mask, is to wear the surgical mask on your face directly. These are designed, there's some electrostatic effect too, to trap particles. And then if you have a at least dual layer cloth mask, that N95 masks, so we'll have to consider that. Dr. Fauci talked about this on TV a couple of days ago. Not sure, right? We have to keep our eyes on it. And so we don't want to just relax and say, oh, wow, we're all good. We have to account for the fact that this virus is evading some of the defenses as it mutates. And that's just what viruses do. It's one of the reasons why there's HIV. It mutates so fast that you can't build a vaccine. Now, the UK variant that should become the, that is expected to become the dominant strain, the Moderna vaccine seems to be effective against it. But it's the same, you know, 95% efficacy against it isn't clear, but significant effects. There are some vaccines, AstraZeneca, I believe, they pulled it from South Africa because it doesn't work against that variant. So again, we'll keep our eyes on it. The, with the Pfizer vaccine and the Moderna vaccine, there may have to be, you know, booster shots, whatever that looks like. But for the UK variant, and again, that's the one that's expected to become dominant, those vaccines actually do work. And so the links to, you know, those news stories are there. And, you know, you can read those if you want to. But again, we can't just relax and, but at least there are positive trends, right? When we see three green data trends, that's good. You know, the cases are going down. And so if we remain vigilant, then hopefully that can continue. And if people get vaccinated, then the new strain has nothing to dominate, right? Because if the vaccine is effective, then it simply won't spread. So in terms of the vaccine, as mentioned previously, you know, Dr. McCorkin had said, you know, what an amazing job Chief Holloway has done. I know, I talked to him a couple of weekends ago, and I know everyone in the community got this email that we sent out. He set up a hotline for people who don't have email addresses, right? Because there are a significant number of people, 65 and older, who are eligible in Phase 1B. And so he set up a hotline, they weren't sure how many calls they're going to get. But I know, because I talked to him late on a Friday night, he and his wife Rebecca, who, you know, is responsible for the Rockingham County Fair and used to teach in Rockingham County schools, they were still registering people by hand late Friday night at 10 o'clock. And so his commitment really to community health in Rockingham County is outstanding. We, you know, talk every other day and just, you know, how excited he gets when he gets his hands on a couple more doses because he knows they can really help someone who needs that vaccine. And so it's been such a joy to work with him. Again, face distribution, I talked about this previously. All RCPF staff will have had an opportunity to get their first dose by this Wednesday. So we have some that can't make it on Wednesday. So there'll be another clinic the following week. But we've been able to basically get the first dose to our staff. And then, of course, in a couple of weeks, the second round will start. And so we're in a, in a good position there. And it, again, Governor Northam's announcement, of course, comes in connection with prioritizing education staff in order to get the kids back to school. Again, I said this previously, we're not quite sure yet whether the vaccine prevents actual infections. It could still lead to people passing it on. But I read an interview with an epidemiologist just a couple of days ago who said that would be extraordinary if it's really, if it really would work that way. So, you know, he expects that once you're fully vaccinated and, you know, I think it's right now 10 days past the second shot, that would be, you know, the full effect of the Moderna vaccine. You should be good to go, again, unless, you shouldn't also be able to pass it on. But the research will show us that, right? But a lot of hope and with staff having had that chance, you know, then that means we can, you know, breathe at least a little bit easier, not having to worry too much about the severe outcomes. Because this is one of the things that, you know, when you talk about 95% efficacy, it means, you know, 95% reduction in your chance to get COVID. But of the 30,000 people in the Pfizer and Moderna clinical trials, when they looked at those that did still get it, the number of those that got the severe version of COVID out of the 30,000 was one. And so that's as close as you can get to a perfect vaccine, right? That's, that's better than many of our other vaccines are. And so again, there's a lot of hope on the horizon and, but it doesn't mean we can just let our guard down, right? Those masks are our best guard and they will need to stay up. Any questions from the board?
Of course. I guess my first question is, so what would be our next goal, our next step? We've got the kids, we've got all grades back in school. What's the next thing on the horizon for us?
Well, there's a lot of conversation in Richmond about summer school. The, we don't quite know yet what the funding streams will be. Governor Northam has hinted at a number of different things, whether some school divisions want to move to kind of disbalance schedule next year where, you know, some people call it year-round school. It's not really year-round because you always have breaks in between. Some school divisions may go in that direction. Some may extend the current school year, some may offer a more expansive summer school program. We have to remember that it's not just about the stuff that we learn, right? The content. It's going to be critical that we address the mental behavioral health needs of our students, the mental health needs of our staff. And so there has to be a lot of work that goes into that. Can I tell you exactly what that's going to look like? No, because we need to first find out, you know, what programs will be funded, where additional money can come from. We have, you know, CARES money still for the next two years that we can use for some of this. And yeah, there has to be but, you know, the hope certainly would be that in the fall, we will have, you know, something like a you have high school teachers, for example, teaching an A day, B day. Now they would have to combine those groups and you really would have to go immediately to something like three feet in order to accomplish that. And unless that becomes the guidance from VDH or CDC, it's not the responsible thing to do. So, yeah, it's adding more students. And again, with staff vaccinated and then clinical trials being underway for, I believe, right now, 12 to 15 year olds. And so they stagger that, you know, if the 12 to 15 year olds do well, then it's the next younger group because immune systems are different and it's not just a smaller dose sometimes. And so once, you know, all that happens, then, you know, there'll be a vaccine available for students as well. And so, you know, that's, that's our best hope. If, I believe, 70% is kind of the magic number that I always hear. Once 70% of the population have their vaccine, the virus isn't going to be able to spread anymore. And so currently, so it's trying to figure out what the opportunities are among all the obstacles and then moving forward. But we're talking about it every day.
I'm sorry, I think I had the mic on me, so I'm not sure that everybody heard. But basically, to summarize what you said, we're pretty much in this semester. This is what the semester is going to look like. And we're good to go until June. And then we'll figure out after June, how we can get kids, more kids in school for next year. And then also, just to make sure everybody's crystal clear, even though Governor Northam said year-round school, we're not looking at extending the school year and doing anything this summer, correct?
Well, we will have summer programs, but no, not in terms of having a different calendar that's year-round. But I cannot tell you what it will look like in May, right? I don't want to, I hope we just continue on this trend. But it's also important to remember that in many European countries, you know, when the variants hit, it significantly increased the number of people who have this rule of last to shut down, first to open. But it got to the point, you know, once the economy had shut down, that in the end, they also closed schools, right? But, and it's not the first step. And so we're in February. We hope, based on the trends we see, that this is where we continue. You know, we continue with students on an alternating schedule. If something changes, just like, you know, we didn't know exactly last July, you know, what September would look like, then we'll adjust. I think flexibility has been, you know, the key in all of this. And as always, you know, we'll look for expert advice, you know, what is recommended? What do we see in other places across the world and across the United States and Virginia? And adjust, you know, for best practice. So, but if the trends continue the way they are, yes, then I would expect our students to continue to be in school in person on that AB hybrid schedule. Again, unless guidance from CDC and VDH changes or the no indication that it will be in green anytime soon. That would be, I believe, fewer than five cases per 100,000.
That as long as we stay trending down and nothing blows up, we're set.
Yes. I would say, I mean, the current plan is based on best practice. And again, Governor Northam's confirmed that, CDC's confirmed that. But we have to also be very, very vigilant about our mitigation strategies, right? Can't all of a sudden seeing the masks coming down. So we'll, we'll look at schools and, you know, do walkthroughs, whatever it takes to make sure that that continues. And then, you know, that's the best way to keep those trends going, is to be vigilant and mask up.
And thank you and your team for all of your work. It's this, I'm so proud of our division for being the division that the governor, the governor is saying, this is how you need to be. He didn't specifically say Rockingham, but everything that he wanted, we're there, right?
Yeah, I mean, again, in a pandemic where 400,000 people died, right? I don't want to say, wow, you know, this is awesome because it's a terrible a good approach. Scientists always know in the end, they'll be wrong to some extent. Science constantly changes, right? The physics that I learned in high school, I mean, that's, you know, that's not the physics we teach today. You know, and epidemiology the same way. But it kind of adjusts to that center, you know, where the really good information is. But it kind of adjusts to that center, you know, where the really good information is. And so I think that's, you know, credit to the board and credit to the team that we have. And, you know, it, it's basically looking at what the research shows and then just following that, right? And that's not always easy, right? Because there's a lot of emotion and people, you know, push back, but, you know, and I think that's how we can model that. So we certainly, you know, are glad that this is how it played out. But again, we're dealing with a global pandemic that's affected every corner of the globe. And so, you know, we'll just continue to use that approach. That's how I would characterize it. You know, members of the media have called and said, well, I listened to Northam's press conference and that's, you know, what you guys have been talking about since August. And said, yeah, you feel validated to some extent that the approach continue that battle and, and follow all the advice, you know? And then, then we'll be in a better place a week from now and every week after that. But I appreciate that.
Anything else, board members? Thank you, Dr. Schike. Appreciate it. Board members in your packet, you have the financial review for January 2021. You have information regarding the VSBA hot topic conferences on May 17th or March 17th and April 13th. And then you have information regarding the VSBA Spring Forum Valley Region. Pack be happy to help you with that. We'll move into other business, school board questions, answer.
Carter, and he recounts a story where once President Carter's oldest son came home having failed a Latin Latin. That's pretty amazing. And it's that same sense that I have listening to Dr. Schike present on this. He has jumped on that topic and has, you know, I, I just can't say enough kudos, Oscar, about the, the information that you give and the way that you presented and the, and your ability to shift directions. And I, I just really hope that, that our community recognizes that because it's, it's a remarkable, remarkable presentation. I, and I'm not blowing smoke at you, you know, it's not like you pay me. But, you know, and, and, and I think there's some kudos that needs to go out for that. In case my brother's listening on a lighter note.
Echo Mr. Braden's sentiments. Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Dr. Schike?
Of course, there are oceans in between Dr. Fauci and what I have to say on this topic. I just hope if, you know, he ever saw a video of this, he wouldn't say, what an idiot. So it's, you know, it's good to, again, also have had his advice, right? That's where the ventilation came from, was Dr. Fauci saying, pay attention to ventilation. So that's always good to have him in our corner and giving us advice. But I do want to point out two of our staff members, in addition again to everyone who's worked over, over mix up to this point. But Jerry Lehman and Ramona Pence, Jerry, you already had on your board report. And at today's board report, you may have already seen it, Dr. Pence has also decided to retire at the end of the school year. And so you know that she has been in Rockingham County for quite a while and in a number of different positions as an administrator and then lately at central office. So I want to say thanks to Mona for all the work she has done, you know, for the kids in this community and also for our staff. So thank you, Mona.
May I make an observation, Ms. Reed? Jerry, you and I worked together at Camelot Nursing Home when we were both young men with hair or lighter hair. And Mona, I've known you and your family since I could walk, I guess. And I just want to say that it has been my pleasure to know
Thank you, Mr. Braden. On that note, I think we will call the meeting, adjourn the meeting for tonight. We have reason to go into closed session, so I need a motion to enter closed session.
I move that the board can enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to provisions of the Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711, A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individual's assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation.
Thank you, Ms. Lord. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussion, board members? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries 5-0. We're in closed meeting. Thank you all of you for being here with us this evening. We appreciate it. Safe travels home. Fingers crossed the weather's going to hold out for the week. Jeremy's not here. He's getting his rest.